Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing. Before we get started, please turn off any cell phones or other electronic devices to avoid interruption. If anyone is here planning on presenting testimony, please sign in the sheet in the back of the hearing room. It's Wednesday, September 8th. The time is 6 o'clock, the time set for our public hearing. All three commissioners are present. Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
None.
We will begin with unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove the unfinished business from the table?
Mr. Chair, move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'll now open the public hearing on application number 202101024-0A. We'll hear from staff, then we'll take public testimony.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes, this is the zoning ordinance text amendment application that was tabled from your last meeting in August to allow staff to consult with legal based on the board's recommended language. I am going to read that language for you here. This particularly pertains to the neighborhood meeting portion of this text amendment. The new language will state that "The purpose of the neighborhood meeting shall be to review the proposed project. Such neighborhood meetings shall be held in person, however upon request to the Director of Development Services, the neighborhood meeting may be held virtually if the Director determines there is good cause for holding the meeting virtually." I will note that the rest of the proposed changes to the ordinance specifically for public hearings, that will remain as previously presented to the board in planning and zoning. And staff recommends approval of this proposed change, and I'll stand for any questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So Connor, do we need to also read into the record the modification below that would need to be changed if we accept and approve this today?
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Commissioner Kenyon, yes. I can also read that portion too. If that modification did change the following language, it would say "If a neighborhood meeting is also to be conducted by remote or virtual means, any required notices shall contain sufficient information so the public may attend via the remote or virtual means."
Thank you.
Yeah.
Both change. I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for staff or is there any other public testimony? I'm now going to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion from the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to thank staff and thank our legal staff, Lorna as well, for working together on this. We sent them back to the drawing board last public hearing. We felt the language is a little ambiguous and we wanted to make sure that the public was very certain and sure when reading it what it meant, and I think that this language does a better job of that and really suffices. So I'll make a motion to go ahead if you're ready to move to approve.
Is that a motion?
I move to approve project number 202101024-0A. This is a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for virtual neighborhood meetings and public hearings. And that's based on the conclusions of fact, any testimony rewording we saw tonight. So, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the application. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have another item of unfinished business, 202101551V. Do we need a motion to remove that from the table?
Mr. Chair, I will move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Now we have before us 202101551-V, Dick Beldrika. The public hearing was closed on this item at the 8/11 meeting. Is there a discussion from the board?
If we could hear from staff, I believe they received additional information that we had requested from the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we did receive a letter from the neighbor that you had requested to the north if he had any concerns, and he has no concerns with the swimming pool encroaching into the setback.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And since the last hearing, have you heard from any other individuals, members of the public regarding this project?
Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, we have not heard anything from any of the neighbors in that area.
Thank you.
Did the letter include that it might improve his property to not have an above-ground pool button right up against his property as opposed to an in-ground pool five feet away?
Mr. Chairman, it didn't discuss that.
Didn't discuss that, okay. All right, is there any discussion from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm going to go ahead and move to uphold the staff's denial of this project. I think the variance, it's not supposed to grant a special rider privilege, it's not otherwise allowed, and this variance would grant a special privilege. And I think you made a good point. I think that the neighbor, although we wouldn't change their mind because the neighbor sends us a letter of approval, I think they want it because there's an above-ground pool. And doesn't, there's no undue hardship characteristics that I can see involved here, they just have to make the swimming pool a little bit smaller to fit within the criteria in the setback. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to deny, uphold staff's findings.
Is there a second to the motion? I don't hear a second to the motion. Is there an alternative motion?
Mr. Chair, I will, I will move to approve item number 202101551-V. Based on the additional information provided that was requested at the last meeting, I think we discussed it quite a bit at the last meeting, and I didn't see a valid reason to deny, especially if the neighbors were in agreement. So with that, I would move to approve.
Well, I'd second the motion. I believe that there is an undue hardship here because you can't really move his pool back and make it a five-foot wide pool, and it does improve the neighborhood by having an in-ground pool as opposed to a above-ground pool. So I'm going to second that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To support that motion, we would recommend that this item be tabled to allow staff to prepare updated findings of fact and conclusions of law to support your approval of the variance.
And Mr. Chair, I would recommend that for the record, you, the motion maker actually, on the record, states what the undue hardship is. We have to build a record if you're going to make a motion.
Well, does the motion maker want to amend his motion?
Is that, Mr. Chair, is that required? I guess that would be questioned of legal.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, that is a matter that I would need to conduct some research on. So I really can't give you an answer off the top of my head.
Okay, I would recommend then that staff has recommended that we table this motion. Do you want to make an alternate, or table this item?
All right, I would move to table this item until the next public hearing.
Well, you wouldn't need the next public hearing.
The next public hearing, the next open business meeting for revised findings of fact, conclusions of law by our development staff.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, if that could be the open business meeting on the 21st, that would provide Diana with adequate time to prepare those revised findings of fact.
And I'll move to table to September 21st for revised findings of fact, conclusions of law, which would grant the variance.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? Hearing none, I'll second the motion. Motion's been made, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Well, now on to new business. New business, I will open the public hearing on application 202101986-BAC-AC. We'll hear from staff, and then we'll take testimony.
Let me share my screen here, just a second.
Okay, Commissioners, before you, we have application 202101986-VAC-AC, David and Glenda Jenkins. So this is a vacation and an accessory use application to remove a platted utility easement and to permit an accessory structure with a proposed footprint of 2,640 square feet. The property is located at 3172 South Black Hills Drive Boise and contains .91 acres in the estate residential R1 district and Section 26 Township 3 North Range 1 East. So the existing utility easement that runs east-west through the entirety of Lot 10, Block 2 of Roan Meadows Number 2 subdivision is proposed to be vacated. The detached structure will be built directly over this existing easement location. You'll see here on the south part of the property there, that white box is where that shop is going to go. See back here, that's the easement there highlighted in yellow. And so a billing permit is also going to be required for the proposed structure. It will be built for both personal use and storage only. The state code does require that public utility users of that easement agree to the vacation, and all necessary entities have provided those comments that they are relinquishing the easement. As evidenced in the record, the proposed accessory structure will meet all the dimensional standards for this estate residential R1 district. The specific use standards for an accessory structure greater than 1,500 square feet will also be met. The comp plan also, as adopted by Ada County, it will be compatible with this application. The estate, or I'm sorry, the land use map for the Boise comp plan, as adopted by Ada County, designates the site as large lot, which is primarily intended for single-family homes on densities of up to two units per acre. The proposed structure will be accessory to that existing home located on-site and will be used for personal storage and not for commercial purposes, and it's compatible with that comp plan. We have no public or agency opposition to this application, and staff is recommending approval, and I will stand for any questions.
Did the public utility just never use the easement?
Chairman Beck, yes, that's how it seems. I believe that this utility's easement was approved years ago with the plating there, and a lot of these utilities companies just are no longer utilizing these at all. So there was no pushback from them vacating this.
Do we have any testimony from anybody else? Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
All right, wow. We're sitting in a parking lot in a restaurant in El Waco, Washington, so I'm glad I can connect in.
Well, nice. Have a good trip.
Do you have any questions of us?
I don't have any questions unless you're supposed to...
Please state his name for the record.
Could you get your name for the record, please?
David and Glenda Jenkins.
Okay. Did you have any testimony you'd like to provide for us to take?
No, we've, like they said, we've contacted all of the utilities. They've written us letters back, it said they vacated the easement, so we'd like to get this approved, so we can move forward with building our shop here as soon as possible.
Well, I thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony? If not, I'm going to now close the public hearing. Is there a discussion from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I find that the applicant falls within Ada County Code, and based on the testimony we've heard from staff at the findings of facts and conclusions of law, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve project number 202101986-VAC-8AC.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a safe trip.
Next is application 202100324-S, Sarah Martz. I'll now open the public hearing on this application. We'll hear from staff, and then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a project for England Sub. It has a preliminary plat for a three-lot subdivision in the rural residential district. The applicant is Sarah Martz. The RR does allow for 10-acre minimum property sizes. This site is on South Locust Grove and East King Road in Kuna's area of Impact B, which follows the Ada County Comp Plan. This is what the preliminary plat will look like. There are two lots that will have access on Locust Grove, and the third lot will have an access on King. These are some pictures of that area. It's pretty open, not a lot of residential uses. The key conditions of approval, Ada County Highway District, shall approve all of the improvements, and the applicant will comply with all of the conditions of approval for the preliminary plat. Staff and Planning and Zoning Commission are recommending approval of the preliminary plat, and I'll stand for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Are there questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've been looking at the area of concern for drilling, southwest area of concern for drilling. Does this lie within that area, and if so, how close is it to some of the wells that have been drying up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, we did look at that. Country Estate subdivision is in Boise. They've had some issues with their wells. It's approximately 8.5 miles from this property. It's not in an area of groundwater concern or drilling concern as determined by IDWR. And so there isn't a big issue in that area. They also have open irrigation ditches, which helps to the water level.
Great. And then as a follow-up, it is in the nitrate priority area, so have the applicants been advised of this and what they need to do for their drinking water?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, they will have to work with Central District Health and IDWR for the wells. They have the jurisdiction on those types of uses.
That they're aware that they're in the nitrate area.
They are aware.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Is there any other questions for the staff? Okay, is the applicant here, wants to provide testimony? Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sarah Martz. I reside at 3117 West Smith, Boise, Idaho, 83703. I'm just here to answer any questions, if you happen to have any. We're in agreement with all conditions of approval, and to answer Commissioner Kenyon's question, we are aware of the nitrates, and we will work with Central District Health and IDWR.
Great.
That'll stand for any questions.
Just, yeah, just to, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just like to have that conversation with people, so they're aware that they need to check their wells once a year, take the water down there, and then it's easy, just using reverse osmosis systems in the house for clean drinking water. So don't want to scare anybody off, but they should actually be aware of it and know that it's pretty easy, the precautions that you can take.
Okay, is there any other questions to the applicant?
Are you representing the developer?
I'm representing the owner, yes, sir.
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to provide testimony for this application? Anyone online or anyone in the room? I'm now going to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve application number 202100324-S, England subdivision, based on the findings of facts, conclusions of law that were contained in the staff report and the testimony that we heard here tonight.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now I'll open the public hearing on application 202101815V, Ann Gailey. We'll hear from staff, then we'll take testimony.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a variance for this front setback to build an agricultural structure 12 feet from the front property line within the rural residential district. One of the things with the agricultural structure, they do have to have ag exemption, which that property does. However, state law does allow for us to do zoning certificates for agricultural buildings specifically for setbacks. This is the site of the property. This is more of a vicinity map, and then here is the property. It does run along Chaparral and Henley Place. So we took, we went back and looked at the aerials, and in 2000, that structure was not there. The other structures we would look at... in 2000, that structure was not there. The other structures we would look at as non-conforming. However, the structure that, that was, um, burned down, I have it high...
Blew down.
Okay, blew down. I have, um, highlighted in green. It didn't show up until the 2016 aerial. At that time, they would have had to have a zoning certificate for the setback, which they were, they did not have. So, they were not in compliance with county code at that point. So, here's some road views of that structure. They're in the light green, so you can see that they were built right on the property line. So, we did look at, um, where she could put the, the barn. Um, this is where she's proposing it, along Chaparral Road. There are some other possible placements. Um, there's some that is in a fenced pasture. They could still put a structure there and meet the setback. It's a 30-foot setback from a local road. Um, they also have an arena. They could put a possible placement there to still be able to feed the animals, um, in the front of the property. So, the required findings for the variance, it shall not grant a right or special privilege that's not otherwise allowed in the base district. The variance relieves an undue hardship due to the characteristics of the site, and the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. So, the application does not meet the findings for variance. Um, it does give the applicant a special right, as the properties in the RR district all have to meet the 30-foot front setback requirement on a local road. The variance is not due to the characteristic of the site. There is not hillside and floodplain. It's at the north property line. They can build that barn in several different areas that would still come into compliance with the setback for the RR district. Staff is recommending denial, um, of the variance, and I'll stand for questions.
Is there questions?
So, I just want to make sure, Mr. Chair, that I'm, I'm understanding this correctly. So, the original structure did not receive approval for that location?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, no, it did not receive approval. It was put up, um, without a zoning certificate that was required by the code at that time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Could you show a picture of the road again?
Is that the picture that you'd like to see?
Yeah, and where's the proposed building gonna be?
She wants to put it back just a little bit, 12 feet from this property line.
And that's it right there? That, that's the structure that you're pointing at?
This is the structure that, that was, um, blown down.
Blown down.
But my understanding by the notes, Mr. Chair, is that the roof is still there, was salvaged. So, is the roof not located there? Is it on the property, just lying somewhere?
It is lying on the property.
Okay, so it's not, still erected?
It is not still erected. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. Thank you. Would you like, are you the, are you Ann?
I am.
Okay, Ann, if you could give us your name and, and...
Okay, I'm Ann Phillips Gailey. I live at 8831 Hanley Place, Eagle, Idaho. And I would like to point out that if you'll put that picture of the structure up again, that we have a building that is closer to the road, and that barn was, that hay area has always been used as a hay area. The road was put in after we had put our buildings and our fence, and I would disagree that there is no other place to put that because we have an irrigated field, and there has been floods from the Willowbrook up to covering our eight acres. So, the reason for our hay shed putting, being put where it is, is we would like to replace it where it is. And to answer your question, we took the roofs off and put them, set them. They'd be kind of where the blue tarp is, so it would save us if we could use those roofs again.
You'll have a chance to testify?
Oh, I was just, I was just gonna explain. It just laid over. We just lifted them off, set them in that area, is all we did.
Okay. Mr. Chair, follow-up question. Um, so, how, what happened to the barn?
It blew down.
Was it a huge windstorm, or?
Yes, a huge windstorm. And that barn was built way before 2016. I know the aerial photo doesn't show it, but it has been there.
Do you have evidence of that?
I, I could probably find it, but not...
But you're testifying here tonight that it was built before 2016?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know approximately when it was built?
I would say that was what, around?
I'd say around 2000, 2001.
Yeah.
My son was one or two when we built it, and he's, and he was born in 99.
Has the structure changed significantly that it wouldn't show up on the assessors' report?
That's what you see is right there. I mean, it's been like that for that long.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
You indicated that the road was not there. When was the road put in?
I, I asked that question and haven't come up with an answer. But they put the road in way after our place was in, 'cause all of our fences, our house. This building that you see on this side is much closer to the highway. It's within 12 feet. So, I don't understand, you know, if this road was so, the setback, why didn't they move the road over? There was nothing but farmland on the other side.
You don't know where the road was put? Was the road there when you bought the property?
No.
There's no road at all?
No. It was a dead end.
Was it a trail?
No, it was a dead end. There was nothing there.
That's strange. Did, 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 how, is it, is it a private road?
Well, I, my understanding was that we bought this ground from Hanley, and that he gave them right away to the highway department. I, and I don't know that that's true.
It was Governor Little. Because he owns two sides of us. He owns this side of it and this side of us.
You might as well come up here and state your name for the record if you're gonna testify from the backseat.
Well, I'm just trying to make it simpler.
That's fine. Just, we're trying to, we have to have it on the record.
My name's Tim Phillips. I'm Ann's son, and we live there. What, okay, can I point, which is easier for you? Okay.
Make this simple. This side of Chaparral, see the fencing? Okay, that's Governor Little's. Past that sign right there, that's Governor Little's. This road, Chaparral, doesn't really have it, but it used to come up, up the roadway, up the roadway here.
Way back about 20...
Up, past Grand Mason, they, you know, anyway, the road used to go along the hillsides. It was a dirt road, and went out, went around the hillsides, and Governor Little wanted to fence that, farm that piece on this side. They gave the highway department the variance to come right by our place. We had building, other buildings built on that at the point in time, and we had to tear them down if they didn't go through.
Okay, so, ACHD, Ada County Highway District, had the easement?
Don't know. I don't understand that part of it. At some point in time, either he gave them an easement through there, or however it works, I...
Well, it was your property.
But you had, yeah, but you had to move...
We didn't own it.
We didn't own, you didn't own it.
No.
We just, as you see, where she has the red line, that's ours.
That's our property, correct?
And...
That, that road wasn't there in, I don't know what year then they put it in. I can't re, we don't remember. I mean, I guess we should have looked it up. I figured you guys would know that, but, um...
No, I don't, I don't.
If you look at our deed, we were there in...
Long before that was ever put up.
Long before, yeah. And there was nothing past our, uh, there was nothing past Hanley.
Yeah, like where that road goes down, there was nothing bad as well. Right here.
There was nothing there, 'cause...
And then I just have a quick, quick question for you. So, I want to make sure you stated on the record that when they came and built the road, that you actually had outbuildings that were in that easement area that you had to tear down?
Well, there were just little buildings. There was a chicken coop and some things on it.
Okay, but you had to tear those down?
Removable, yeah.
Yeah, they were just little buildings that we had on.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
But it wasn't your property?
Correct, it was not our property.
So, you were just sort of...
But there was no road, so...
There's no road? Okay.
It was, I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was Governor Little's at the time, and...
No, it was Hanley's.
Was it Hanley's?
It was Hanley's, yeah.
We never built anything solid because it wasn't ours. We just, like, had a chicken coop.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for staff. Have we looked at the property line to make sure that we know where the valid property line is?
Commissioner, um, Kenyon, we do look at, um, the assessors, and typically, those lines may be a little bit off on our aerials in that area because it's far out. It's past, um, the Speedway on your way to Emmett. Um, and so, they may be off on the aerials just a little bit of where those property lines actually are.
Okay, so we haven't looked at anything in our records to see if this property line... I, I, I'm just wondering if they don't, they don't know that they're possibly encroaching on an easement now. Um, this is just really strange.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon, we didn't receive any concerns from ACHD. They did comment...
Okay.
On the application, and they had no concerns.
Okay.
And our neighbor, if you look at our neighborhood, uh, meeting, they were 100% okay with it, and, uh, David Little gave us an email, "okay with it." Uh, and there are our neighbors that we would affect the most.
Okay.
It just seems strange to me that, uh, you've got these, all these properties almost buttoned right up against the road, but that's because the road wasn't there when you built the properties. So, I, I get that, and so my question, I've got a question for staff. On these setbacks, are they setbacks from the road, or setbacks from the property line, or, uh, where are any setbacks supposed to be?
Mr. Chairman, the setbacks are from the property line.
I was asking if we had valid property lines, you know, that we've looked at.
Well, this, we measured the hay shed, and it sits 12 foot back where the building...
We're talking about the white line of the road? That's where it's measured from.
And the building behind it is only like nine foot, 'cause that was an image...
This building right here is actually closer to the white line than the hay shed was. And like I said, those have been there. I guarantee you that building was there before that road was. The, this one right here.
And our fence, 'cause it's all pasture.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You can probably see a little bit of reason for the, uh, for the setback requirement. I mean, if your, um, structure had collapsed onto the road, that could have been a traffic hazard, couldn't it?
Absolutely, sir, and we understand that, but most of that was there before the road was there. I, I don't understand, I mean, that's what we're trying to, you know?
Yeah.
And I completely understand what you're saying, 100%.
But if the setback was so important, when they were putting in that road, you would've...
Why didn't they move it over?
They would, I would, I thought they would have accommodated that setback by putting their road over, 'cause there's nothing on the other side.
As staff, and I'm not trying to be evil, have any of you ever been out there? 'Cause I guarantee you, there's houses and everything else along this Chaparral Road that are, that are not legal.
Better closer than...
Right along that road, right there, there's, there's, there's probably 10 or 15 buildings within the same distance as ours.
Absolutely, but it's, it's generally, you know, you, those are grandfathered in until they need to be torn down, and you want to rebuild something else, and then when you want to rebuild, then we have to re, reexamine the, the requirements. Um, how are you planning to rebuild it? Are you gonna lift up the roof with a crane and then...
Yeah, just set it back on. We're gonna re, put new poles in that are heavier duty, and set it back in. As a matter of fact, we're gonna move it back a little bit, you know, just a little smidge. If where it's at, we're gonna move it back just a little bit away, you know, like a couple of feet more than what it is right now, and then just put the roof back on, yes. It's like it was.
Diana, could you bring up the slide that had the alternate, uh, alternate possible locations that could be set? So, have you examined these possible placements, and what was your concern?
No, and those absolutely won't work.
That's, that's why I ask. Has staff been out there?
Because...
Not trying to be a jerk, but...
This is all...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You need to kind of get a hold of this meeting here.
Yeah.
It's a little out of control.
Okay, yeah, we need to have just one at a time, and we appreciate your additional, uh, information, but we're getting a little hectic here.
Those aren't feasible locations because where this one is along the road is in an irrigated pasture, which is set up and fenced for the animals. The arena is part of his business area, so that doesn't work. Plus, I'm 84. I do a lot of that feeding. I want, you know, I, I would like that hay shed back where it was. It was there for a purpose. This whole place was designed for a purpose. Uh, the last one, the one she has out behind the hen, there's a huge drop-off, and that does flood. I'm not telling you it floods for months. It, when Willowbrook floods, it might be two or three days, but it does flood. Our bottom eight acres has been underwater. One of the, uh, gentlemen that work at the office, the staff has been out there and has seen it. We do have pictures of it under flood.
Okay. All right, well, we need, we need...
Mr. Chair, I have, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Do you have any recollection of whether this, uh, barn was constructed before 1985?
I don't. I, to be honest with you, I'm thinking more...
You, you can talk later.
Yeah, so your son is saying he has, he may know. You might want to relinquish the mic. Did you know?
Just that this, the hay shed?
Mm-hmm, yeah, the, yeah.
It was not, no, ma'am. It was not built before 1985, no.
Okay, so after?
Built the hay shed?
Yeah.
No, it was not.
Okay.
Somewhere, I believe like 2000, 2001 or 2002 is when it was built.
Okay. Just trying to help out here, evoking the calamity clause.
We thank you for your questions and your interest.
Thank you.
You got a little radical, but...
Well, that's okay. Are there others that wants to testify on this application?
I had a neighbor that called in, Mark DeChambeau, said he called.
Don't have anyone else online.
Okay. Hearing no, uh, further testimony, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Question to staff, was there any sort of, uh, if they, if this were to be rebuilt, is there any sort of engineering standards they have to go by to, uh, make sure it's a safe structure?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, no, because ag structures do not require a building permit. The only thing we can look at for an ag structure is the setback per state law. Um, so they're not required to have a building permit. There will be no inspections, um, and they don't have to have engineered plans.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I find that the testimony that I've heard to, here tonight by the applicants, um, testifying that, that buildings, including this building, were already built before the road was built, um, leads me to believe that, um, we need to look at this a little bit differently. I think that, um, this would not, if we did grant it a variance, um, that it would not... I think that this would not, if we did grant it a variance, that it would not be a special privilege. I think that, and it would be a hardship because it was there before the road was built. And so, now we're saying, there's a road that's built, so now you have to set it back. So, regardless of when it was built, I, I would make a motion that I'm going to go ahead and want to approve this once we're finished with discussion.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, yeah, it's, it's interesting. I mean, it seems to involve some aspect of grandfather rights, but considering that the structure is still there, it's just toppled. You, you could almost make the case that they're repairing it as opposed to building a new one, if they're using the existing roof, which is still on the site. And just looking, you know, looking at the map, this is out in the middle of nowhere. No real other, other neighbors close by. It's been there for a long time. We did hear testimony that it would be, that the other possible locations to place it that were suggested by staff would be causing undue hardship. So, I think, I think I'm inclined to grant the variance.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with Commissioner Davidson, and the fact that we did hear testimony tonight that this was designed to function a certain way, and the fact that the applicant is 84 years old, and we'd be asking her to, you know, redesign her whole farming operation, I think would definitely be a hardship on her. So, I appreciate that testimony, or that reporting it to the record.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to go ahead and table this so staff can give us revised findings and facts to go ahead and, and be able to approve the variance on 202101815V. And I'm going to table this to, what's the date?
The 21st.
The 21st of September during our open business meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
What does that mean exactly?
That just means they're going to go ahead and write it up with an approval from the board, and then we will make the final approval with the revised findings of facts based on your testimony here tonight. So, you're good to go.
So, you can, you can repair it, but we, obviously, we can't tell you how to repair it, but we certainly encourage you to make it sturdy so we don't have to go through this again.
Well, that's, well, that's the plan, is to put, it's the poles that broke off.
Right.
And it just laid it over. So, we plan on putting bigger poles in.
Would you consider, would you consider it a calamity that the wind come up and blew it down?
It doesn't matter. It wasn't before 1985. I was trying to help you out with those strange claws that we have.
I can't lie either.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you wanted that in, all right.
And I'll, I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
The motion's been made, and what, what that means, ma'am, is, is we are going to approve it, but it's going to be, give our staff a little bit of time to change the findings of fact and conclusions of law. That's all that...
Next Tuesday, it'll be final.
So, do we need to come, or are we off the hook?
No.
Well, you're all...
You're off the hook.
You're all welcome, but, but you don't need to.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have any further business before the board?
Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of anything else at this point.
It will be recessed. Thank you.
And the time is?